Good morning.
Good morning.
And Happy New Year.
Good New Year.
I'd like to call to order the January 7th, 2015 City Council. I would like to let the record reflect that all council members are present except for Nancy Pravky, who is unable to be here, but all city officials are present. And I would like for you to now stand and we'll have the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father above, Creator of the universe, we ask that you bless this assembly and its work and those who appear before us provide information vital to our citizens. We also ask thy blessings on those honored today with proclamations and presentations. Help us to be, to think, to act on what is right because it is right. Make us truthful, honest, and honorable in all things. Make us intellectually honest for the sake, right, and honor without thought of reward to our souls. Give us the ability to be charitable, forgiving, impatient with our fellow citizens. Help us to understand their motives and their shortcomings even as you understand ours. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with due justice for all.
Thank you, Joan. We have, in addition to our agenda, it'll be a proclamation regarding first responders, but I thought perhaps we should just take a moment of silence to recognize our fallen New York Police Department officers Lou and Ramos, our sincerest sympathies to their families, their brothers and sisters at the NYPD, and their friends. And now, I'd like to read the proclamation from the City of Ponte Gorda. Whereas Florida's first responders, including law enforcement officers, firefighters, paramedics, and emergency medical technicians, face dangerous and uncertain situations every day. And whereas Florida's first responders bravely and selfishly risk their lives daily to protect Florida families, visitors, and businesses. And whereas Florida's first responders are dedicated professionals who make a valuable difference in our communities by upholding the principle that no one is beyond the protection or reach of the law. And whereas acts of recognition, kindness, and appreciation from citizens for Florida's first responders provide them needed encouragement and support. And whereas Governor Rick Scott has declared January 5 through 9 as Florida First Responder Appreciation Week and has invited Florida cities and community partners to take time out of their day to show first responders and their families how much we value their service to our cities, counties, and state. And whereas the City of Ponte Gorda would like to say thank you and to recognize the dedication of the brave men and women who devote their lives to protecting and serving our community. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Ponte Gorda joins Governor Rick Scott in proclaiming the week, January 5 through 9, 2015, as Florida First Responder Awareness Week in Ponte Gorda, and encourages all citizens to take time out of their day to say thank you and to show our first responders and families how much we value their service to our cities, counties, and state. Passed and duly adopted in regular session the 7th day of January 2015, City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, Carolyn Freeland, Mayor. And accepting will be our Fire Chief Ray Briggs and...
Tom.
Tom.
Lewis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have such dedicated individuals, and I, we really do wish to thank you all for your service to our communities. We continually receive thank you notes, and many of our audience and viewing audience do not receive them or know that we receive them, but we constantly receive from our citizens how proud they are and how thankful they are for the work that you do. Thank you.
On behalf of both Captain Lewis and myself, Police Department and Fire Department, we just wanted to thank you for, not only the proclamation, but also to the community for those letters of encouragement. The, just those encouraging words mean more than you really know to, to the crews. With that, we want to thank the crews. That's who we really owe this to. What we have in Ponte Gorda is truly a special team. It's a, a family of first responders regardless of the, of the incident, whether it be fire, law, EMS-type incident. We really have a team that comes together, a unity, so it's, it's truly a family, and we just want to say how much we appreciate, appreciate you. So, thank you for all you do.
Captain Lewis, did you want to say something? Captain Lewis, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I could reiterate what Ray said. I think just receiving this proclamation is very, very humbling. And a special thanks to Rachel for the donuts outside. I try those guys out. Honestly, thank you guys very much, and thank you to all of you.
Rachel?
The idea of the donuts came about because Jason Caskini, our captain here, has graduated from the FBI National Academy and the First Responders Week, so I thought, what a great treat to have some donuts. Jason probably doesn't eat donuts because I, I heard that he did some pretty grueling physical activities while he was away, so his donut days may be over, but some of you can enjoy the donuts, so.
Thank you, Rachel. And thank you, Rachel, for bringing the donuts.
If he's a police officer, he's going to eat a donut.
Our second presentation proclamation is regarding Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and our council member Kavanaugh will present it.
It's my honor. Whereas Martin Luther King Jr. led the civil rights movement in the United States from the mid-1950s until his tragic death on April 4th, 1968. And whereas Dr. King combined social activism with religious faith, working tirelessly to protest injustice and to focus attention on the plight of the nation's poor. And whereas throughout his life, Dr. King advocated the use of nonviolent resistance and the tradition of Mahandascandi to overcome oppression and enhance human dignity and help secure the passage of the 1964 Civil Rights Act and the elimination of legalized racial segregation in the United States. And whereas, among many other honors, Dr. King was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in 1964, and the United States Congress voted to observe a national holiday in his honor on the 3rd Monday in January each year. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Ponte Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim January 19, 2015, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And announces that a parade honoring Dr. King, sponsored by the Benjamin Baker Community Development Corporation, will commence from the Charlotte Harbor Event and Conference Center at 11:00 a.m. Monday, January 19th and end in New Operation Cooper Street Recreation Center. All citizens and visitors are invited to observe or participate. Passed and duly adopted in regular session the 7th day of January 2015, City of Ponte Gorda, Carolyn Freeland, Mayor. And accepting is Reverend Hattcock.
I don't see him here. Can we make sure that he gets this proclamation?
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
We now have introduction of board and committee members who have been nominated. If anyone has been nominated for a committee and would like to introduce themselves, this would be the time to do it. All right, seeing none, we will move and re-adjourn the Community Development Agency. All right, we will begin with citizens' comments on CRA Agenda items only regarding the Status Report, Approval of Minutes, our invoice for legal services, reconsideration of the Subway lease at Harrell Court Center, and discussion of a lease extension with Downtown Merchants Association at Artisans Atelier. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll begin with our CRA Project Status Report.
Our CUNYCA CRA Director.
Okay. The Lashley Park Arena is jam-packed. Still have 15 liver boards, and the community room booked well, and the SS Clearhead, our pump-out boat. We now have five boats in the mooring field.
Yay!
I'd like to point out they're all sailboats, and if the bridge were higher, we would likely have more.
Shall we, shall we ask to raise the bridge?
Guess we have a new project, raising the bridge. The improvements. The sill, sill work actually did work. It's the, now the concrete block underneath it that's leaking, so we're out there getting a contractor, and when they do the painting, they'll also do the sealing of the concrete work, concrete work underneath, and then we'll test it once again. The repurposing of the restrooms is, it's in progress. The inside of the Marina building wall will be completed once we get the outside done. The landscaping, we have a bid back, and we're reviewing that. And the installation of the perimeter railing will be the last one to do. So, it's, we're working on it. Veterans Park, the fundraising is ongoing.
Excuse me, Tom, do you know what the current status of the fundraising is?
I believe it's about between $120,000 and $125,000, if we stand right now. And I don't believe they're going to be looking for the city to store the granite. They, they want to have the timing such that the granite will come when it's ready to be installed, so we may not have to store the granite.
That probably would be safer also for the granite.
Yeah, yeah.
Perhaps just as a comment on this, I was at the, up in Tallahassee the past two days, and our lobbyist Jerry Paul did speak again to the staffer of Representative Al Britton and indicated that this was one of the requests that we had, and again, Representative Al Britton is very, again, supportive of the veterans and thought that this might be something that he would be willing to help push along, so that was a positive kind of response.
It'll be thrilled to hear that. Thank you.
Community Park will be out to rebid. Hopefully get some better bids in this time. We worked some things.
Have we changed anything? Why would, how, were we expecting a different kind of bid? Is, did we just put the same package out for bid, or?
David Hilson, Urban Design Manager, we just had some minor tweaking that we did that we thought we could save some money. We'll, we'll see what happens when it comes. Nothing substantive that you're going to see change.
How far was it over, do you know?
We did not feel comfortable. The dollar value wasn't over something that we could have handled. However, we were uncomfortable with the amount of money that we'd be spending from federal dollars, therefore, we wanted to go back out.
Thank you.
This is all federally funded with the Community Development Black Flag. I brought, Wes, I don't want to dwell on this, we're going to discuss it later on in the council meeting. That's it.
Any questions? David, did you have something to add?
Do you want an update on Morgan Stanley?
That would be wonderful.
Did you get the emails that I sent out?
Yes.
The email that Finance sent to the attorney in New York is information that has already been supplied to them. Unfortunately, that attorney didn't have it, so somebody else had those answers because they've already submitted building plans, and the questions they were asking, they should have known those answers. So, it's going to take some more time now for that. If they had a local attorney, this would have been done, but they don't. They, they operate differently. They're a national company. So, it's still on go. I mean, there's no reason to... The city attorney has completed his review, so now it's just getting the answers regarding the CAM and how the CAM is calculated, and one of the questions the attorney asked, is the city putting in a partition wall? No, we don't, we don't do that. We give you $35 a square foot and you do the work.
Any other questions? Yes.
I just suggested to Howard, because I did talk with some of the members of that office last night, and they're frustrated as well, so maybe Howard could talk to the Morgan Stanley people here, and they could talk to their legal staffer, the higher-ups, because they're, you know, they commented to me last night, "Mayor June." I'm like, mm, that's going to be a stretch, you know? I think they're anxious, but they're frustrated, they're frustrated too, so I think maybe you could facilitate some communication possibly.
Does New York listen to Ponte Gorda?
That's a good question.
No.
Lindsey Harrington, for the record, with Kohl Bank of Residential Real Estate. In regard to the local office participation in the past and their frustration, they voiced their opinions, and basically, they've been quiet since. How do you say that, you know?
Thank you, Lindsey.
It's, it's, you know, they've been very, I mean, as you see them, the, the five or six folks that we know will be engaging people, plus their staff, they're frustrated. They, they wanted to have been in there two years ago. Do you believe in March and April of this year, before years, we've been showing that place to them? Four years it's taken them to make a decision to move along, so.
Thank you.
That's our, that's our situation.
Thank you for your perseverance.
Would you please remind them that in a bill that we'll pay a little bit later to our attorney, it is costing us money to deal with, with them in...
Oh, yes.
New York.
Oh, yes.
We are getting frustrated with it.
Well, we, we all are, and, and there are other people in the community are calling me saying, asking me probing questions about what's going on. They're concerned, businesses and other realtors. Because I've had one inquiry about leasing a space of, of good size, and I told them we have a, about a 90% completed lease and, and discussion. And so, anyway, that's where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for Howard? Thank you, Howard. We'll now move on to approval of the minutes.
Still move.
Second.
The, has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. We have an invoice from Icard Merrill, Cullis, Tim, Purin, and Ginsberg for legal services rendered to the CRA. Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the invoice, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We now move to reconsideration of the Subway lease at Harrell Court Center. Howard, would you like to take the lead on that?
Sure. This is on the agenda because Subway has now reconsidered all their previous requests, and they've come in now with a request that's at least discussable. And that is, until the center becomes 75% occupied, they would like a rent reduction during the period off-season, May through October. And right now, their rent is up to, it says, well, they, they would like a, they would still pay the CAM, and they would like a reduction of about $2.50 a square foot for the off-season only, until it becomes about 75% occupied. They've been there at the beginning, they're one of our original tenants, they have more than paid back for the build-out. It's not really a monetary issue, it's more of a philosophy issue, because monetarily, it can easily be, be handled within our budget. You're talking about a reduction of maybe $1,827 a year, assuming that it's not 75% occupied. Now, you know, there's, there's the Other Side Inc. and Foot Landing that may or may not also request a reduction in the off-season, I don't know. They're newer tenants. Subway's been in there since the beginning.
Howard, I'm sorry.
I, I do have comments on a lot of these items from councilmember.
I was going to ask you, you want to begin with that, and then we'll open it up for questions from council?
Sure. Unfortunately, the councilmember doesn't have the benefit of any discussion, so it's not that she can vote, but at least there are comments. Her comments are that Subway was one of the first tenants, and that Subway adds a diversity of the restaurant mix downtown. Instead of, you know, some of the higher-priced restaurants, Subway is more of the, on the lower spectrum, but at least there's a diversity there, so there is a benefit to having Subway in the center.
Okay. Comments?
Once Morgan Stanley goes in there, what, what will, how close are we to 75%?
Well, it's going to be a lot closer, and if, and if Creative Circle can, gets rented out, I don't, we're almost there.
I would not, personally, I don't think we should do it. I think it sets a bad precedent, and they've been there, I think we're, you know...
Frank?
I agree. I, I think we're opening a Pandora's Box to other of our tenants.
Jane? I want to remind everyone that we talked about this last time, that we are at at least, what, about 50% now as far as occupancy? And if we get that other one, it would be more, so I don't, I think we're almost there.
Did you have a comment?
I, I mean, they've been persistent with their requests. I mean, if the 1,800 was going to help keep them there, but I, I totally see your point that we have two other tenants that then we're going to be nickel and diming, so I could go along with Kim and Frank.
Tom?
Philosophically, if the issue is, does a landlord help out one of its tenants when they're having an issue, I would say from a philosophical standpoint that yes, I think you would want to do that, but from the standpoint that we will in fact be hitting that 75% mark pretty soon, I would not want that precedent created.
Will we deny it?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to deny the request. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it does pass unanimously. We will move on then to discussion of the lease extension with Downtown Merchants Association at Artisans Atelier.
The Artisans Atelier lease is up April of 2016. We have a request from the Downtown Merchants that they would like to renegotiate or extend the lease for an undesignedated amount of time, well in advance, I mean, the lease doesn't run out for another over year. They would like to start the process now. They have some artists who would like to sign more than a year lease. They'd like to sign two years, and they don't, the Downtown Merchants doesn't know if they're still going to be the manager of the Artisans Atelier. We've also had a visit from one of the artists, this was a while ago, who had expressed interest in possibly managing the facility as well. Has a copy of the lease, and remember now, the Artisans Atelier, when it was designed originally way back when, 2010, it was unused space. It was not built for occupation per se of a regular retail operation. So, the idea was to put in an artist incubator, that's what it is. And they're full up, they're doing well now, they bring in folks, so it's, it's proven successful, at least to add some life to the center. So, the issues are the questions that I posed before you is first, do we still want an Artisans Atelier there when the lease runs out? And if that answer is yes, do we want to sit down with the Downtown Merchants and renegotiate a lease now? Or do we wait? Because it's well ahead of time, we're over a year, a year and a few months away. Or do we wait and then renegotiate with the Downtown Merchants later, or put it out for proposals?
Yes, Frank.
Haven't we lost money because of paying the property taxes on that?
Yes, in the last fiscal year, we've actually lost, when I say we lost, $1,000. We lost more over three years. The rent they pay us do not equal the property taxes. The reason they pay property taxes, they're a 501(c)(6). They're not a 501(c)(3). So, it's not in the lease that they pay property taxes. Now, that's one of the items we could talk about if and when we renegotiate.
I also want to point out that, that our other tenants already pay their own property taxes.
Yes.
And if we renegotiate a lease, I think that has to be a must in it. Thank you.
So, if we're, if we're looking at this as an incubator, have any of the artists that are in there actually moved out and opened up something in the community, or?
Good morning, Jerry Purceller, President Downtown Merchants Association. We have had two artists move out and go out and do other things. I don't know exactly how they're doing today.
Okay.
So, it has been an incubator of, of sort. One of the artists, Mark Pruitt, has moved up to Sarasota, and I'm not sure exactly how he's doing. He was with us for about two years, and I can't remember the other gal's name, it's been about three years ago, she moved out and is on her own. The ones in there now seem to be doing quite well, so there's possibly potential there for them, a couple of those, to move on as well and get bigger and better things.
I mean, I'd like to see them move on in Ponte Gorda.
Not Sarasota, yes.
Sarasota, but I love the idea of having it there. I don't think it should cost us money already, it's very, you know, I mean, the money that we get from there is, is nothing, so I like the idea, I like, I like having it there. I would like to see people move out in Ponte Gorda and open a business, but...
Jane?
I want to remind everybody, that would be dead space if we did not have them there.
Right.
And that is one, one thing that I'm, I think that we're, we should be very proud that we put them in, and it's a real draw for downtown.
Right, right.
I was wondering if, if there's a way that we can measure how successful that the atelier is. The lease, as I, as I read it, requires them to pay $25 per month or 10% of their gross sales. Has there been a time when they've paid based on sales? And how, how do we monitor whether, how well they're doing? I don't, I don't know if we know that.
I, I don't quite understand the question.
The lease, correct me if I'm wrong, Howard, the lease calls for rental payment of 10% of gross sales or $25 per month, whichever is greater.
Correct, okay.
I don't know if the sales are...
Okay, presently, we are paying, the artists are paying a $75 a month rent, and that's considered sales. So, basically, you're getting $75 a month from 15 units, which is like $1,300 a month. So, you get $135.
Rachel, did you have any comments?
10%.
I just, if we're going to do anything, renegotiate or open it up, we definitely need to have the property tax piece in there because, I mean, this is a subsidy, which has worked because it's, it's full and it's thriving, but I would like to see us get out of subsidizing the whole operation. the whole operation.
Howard, did Nancy, excuse me, did Nancy Pravky have any comments on this?
She would first like to know whether the CRA wants the atelier to remain. Her comment is yes, they've proven to be a good fit for that space. And do we want to recover at least the property taxes?
I think that what I hear in terms of consensus is that we all agree that the atelier is a good kind of, good thing to have, that it is a wonderful addition to our community. I also hear consensus that if we renegotiate, that we incorporate the property taxes. Am I correct?
Yes.
The next question is, I think, do we want to renegotiate this point for 2016 and beyond, or do we wish to wait?
Just a question I need, I'd like to have clarified, are we charging them rent on a monthly basis, no matter what the sales are, or are sales going to factor into this lease arrangement that we have with them?
We, I'm sorry, we have no control over their sales.
Well, isn't that in the lease right now?
It is.
It is.
Not, in my recollection, it was based on what we charged the artists for rent was considered sales. We have no control over their sales.
I don't know how they would be able to track them.
I don't know either, but I believe that's how it's currently written.
So it would have to be revised?
Then we really need to change that. And the other thing that we might want to look at, I don't know if we need to do this right now, even extend the, go into a renegotiation of all these right now, we may want to take a look at how much it would cost to flood-proof that section. I had a conversation with Randy Cole, and I don't believe that it would be a tremendous amount of money if we ever wanted to re-use that space for a different purpose. We just might want to have that information before we make a decision.
I would love to have that information. For the whole place that is really.
Do we have a comment from Lindsay?
This could be something of advantage to Downtown Merchants Association, but we have a huge space behind the atelier that's used by the city of Punta Gorda for storage. For instance, the Christmas tree, as I understand, is stored in there. Now, it's a windowless area, but it's probably an area of this size of this room, that if you could probably have artisans in there, you could probably, you know, put offices in there and lease them out to individuals, you know, an independent realtor, or somebody starting up a business, a little retail shop, but it is windowless, okay? And you have the bathrooms right next door, so there's a space there. If you ever considered waterproofing that area, you could use that area as well. Now, it forces the city to go find a place to put, you know, the storage they have back there. But again, it could be a broadened resource for the city.
Thank you.
Yes, Tom?
I've been told by Randy Cole that the storage space is flood-proofed, so it would be a matter of flood-proofing just the exterior space that the atelier occupies. And I just think it's information that we should have before we move ahead and make a decision.
Good point. All right, so then what I hear is we're not interested right now in renegotiating the lease, and we will ask staff to get an assessment on what it would cost to flood-proof that area. Is that what I hear?
Well, we could certainly get the cost to do that, to bring it up to speed for, it may be more than just flood-proofing, to bring that spot up to rentable retail-type space, but so, I thought the answer to the first question was you wanted the atelier there, so maybe not?
I mean, I guess we want to explore all the options before we, you know, it still could serve in that capacity, but I think we're saying we want some more information before we actually, they still have a year and four months.
Oh yeah, we do, we have time.
So we're not in a rush to renegotiate at this point, we want to look at
Okay.
All the options.
I think that's what I hear the council saying. Okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you, Jerry.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have now citizens' comments on CRA, or any items related to CRA. Any citizens' comments? Yes, John?
If you don't mind, Joan Wright, and this time, I'm representing as a treasurer of the Downtown Merchants Association, nothing to do with the chamber. I just want, talking about the atelier, the accounting for that falls on my desk, and it is not an easy task when you're working with these artists and working with all the people that are involved. And I would say probably in my week, it's two hours a week is dedicated just to running and managing that Quig Books account, and making sure that they're up to date, that you get your check, and that the Comcast get paid, and everybody else. If the issue is the 501(c)(6), there's the DMA, then I would suggest you look at a 501(c)(3) and let them do that. And there are 501(c)(3)'s in town that might be able to do that, that takes the taxable property taxes off the table, and that comes back the same deal. And I'll be happy to pass those accounts to whoever you decide to give that to.
A question on that note, it may be our finance director or Lindsay Harrington, because I asked about that too, as far as like, the gift shop in the Visual Arts Center. I mean, even though they're a nonprofit, they have a retail operation, so how does that jive with property taxes?
From what I understand, Dave Drury for the record, from what I understand, from the property appraiser, if it's rented to an operating organization that is not, he's talking about putting it into a charitable organization's hands, but if it is then in turn rented out to a for-profit operation, then it's taxable. That's the same problem we have with us being, we're tax-free, everything we own is tax-free, except we have to pay taxes on the atelier and some other areas because it is being rented to a for-profit organization. So even if a not-for-profit goes in there, we're still going to have to pay property taxes on that. And that's, John heard something different, this is everything we've ever dealt with with the atelier, and we've discussed it at length. We're also getting a discount, because it's not officially a rentable space, it's being charged as warehouse space, and so we're getting a break on the taxes. The taxes would be substantially higher if it was considered rentable space. Right now, it's just considered, he has given us a break because it is, we've explained to him how it's not legally rentable, so then he's letting us, or he's charging us for warehouse space.
So then, it doesn't matter whether it's a for-profit or a c6 or a c3?
If they put it into the hands, that's right, if a manager came in as a not-for-profit, it's still being rented to a for-profit, and that makes it taxable.
Makes sense. So in that case, it doesn't make any difference, but I
I don't see it.
But I understand now that if we do make it flood-proof and
Then it would be taxed.
Retail space, then our taxes
It would be taxed the same way as Foot Landing and Subway and everything else, it'd be the exact same, so we would lose that break that we're getting right now.
Do we still want to move forward on the?
I think we should, because, you know, things are really picking up, and that's very, that will be very valuable space. I mean, I think we should know what it would cost.
There could additional space become available as a result of this information, the storage area might become rentable space, or a portion of it, we don't know until we do a little homework on it.
I would also be interested whether the storage space, if there is access to the atelier space, in essence, or do we take out walls? You'd have to take out walls, or you can't take out walls because they're supporting walls for the garage, or?
Right.
Howard, you would have to go through the concrete wall. The storage space, boy, I don't know who would move in there. There is no windows, it is dark, it is, I mean, we use it for a lot of storage in there. Yes, there's a lot of room in there. I don't know if anybody would move in there.
And there's no way to put windows from there to the atelier?
I don't know how.
Okay.
Well, at a cost, sure, you could do anything at a cost.
Okay, well, we'll just keep then looking at how we can make the atelier at this point in time.
We'll look into the flood-proofing for the atelier, and see what it costs to bring that up to speed.
Sounds good. Are we good? Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just an update on marketing with the Hurlicourt Center. We have a restaurant looking at the old Creative Circle location. We've had them in there twice. Tom caught them the other day over there looking, studying, and doing some measuring for the construction side of, you know, finishing out the bill, the interior of the building and everything. But anyway, they like the location, it is an awesome location for a restaurant, or pub, or whatever, and we continually get people inquiring. And of course, this last group are back again, so that's where we are.
They had their tape measures out and everything, seemed enthused.
Wonderful. Yes, Jerry?
Excuse me, if I may, Jerry Purceller again, President of Downtown Merchants, in questioning to Tom about sales rent. According to my lease, it says here that the tenant shall pay to the landlord on the 10th day of each month, 10% of gross income of the rental fees collected. Nothing about sales.
Does it say something about gross sales? I read something, I believe.
Gross income shall be defined as those monies received from the artist by the tenant for the use of the portion of the premises. That's 10%, that's the $75.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Anything else? Commissioner comments? Rachel?
I'd just like to say that I left a little box out there with papers for, if you wanted to leave a note for our first responders, I will deliver those to them, so that's out there by the donuts, so help yourself to both, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Tom?
No, thank you.
Happy New Year to all, congratulations and thanks to first responders, and can we take a doggy bag of the donuts home?
Sure.
Nothing, thank you.
All right, and I don't have anything else, except, again, Happy New Year to all, and to thank Jane and Frank, and we will see you next time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, where's my screen? I think it went to sleep on me. All right, we'll now call back to order the city council meeting, and we have several public hearings. Mr. Levin, welcome back.
Thank you, it's great to be back. This is GA-01-15, which is the first reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda amending and restating the City of Punta Gorda Firefighters' Retirement System as adopted by Ordinance 879-87, and subsequently amended by restating the City of Punta Gorda Firefighters' Retirement System, providing for definitions, providing for membership, providing for a board of trustees, providing for finances and fund management, providing for contributions, providing for benefit amounts and eligibility, providing for pre-retirement death benefits, providing for disability benefits, providing for vesting of benefits, providing optional forms of benefits, providing for beneficiaries, providing claims procedures, providing for reports to the Division of Retirement, providing for a roster of retirees, providing for a maximum pension limitation, providing for distribution of benefits, providing miscellaneous provisions, providing for repeal or termination of the system, providing for exemption from execution and non-assignability, providing for pension validity, providing for forfeiture of pension under certain circumstances, providing for indemnification and defense of claims, providing for direct transfers of eligible rollover distributions, providing for severability provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Comments? Howard, any comments on this?
No, what we're doing here, the pension ordinance, is exactly the same as what we did with the general employees and the police, bringing it up to IRS standards.
Okay. Any other comments? This is a public hearing on GA-0115. If you wish to comment on GA-0115, now's the time to do it. This is a public hearing. Any comments? Last call?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move approval of GA-01-15?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve GA-0115. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, unanimous. We now move on to ZA-1314.
Yes, this also is the first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26, Punta Gorda Code, known as the Land Development Regulations, amending Article 8, Standards of General Applicability, Section 8.5, fences, walls, and hedges, to clarify regulations pertaining fences, privacy walls, and hedges, providing for heights and required setbacks for properties located on corner lots within the neighborhood residential overlay district, adding limitations on construction and materials for privacy walls, renumbering to correct inconsistencies, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
Yes, ma'am.
For the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official. This is, you recall, we had discussed previously, it does take care of issues that we've come across in the neighborhood residential downtown zoning districts for residential properties that are on corners, so this amendment will allow them to put up the six-foot fence on the property line in the rear, effective rear yard, instead of having to hold it back five feet.
Okay. Questions?
Question? Will this go into effect after the next reading? Because I noticed that one of the lots is being cleared that was in question, that was requesting this, so they would, it would happen in time for them to be able to?
The, well, there's one, actually Howard's neighbor, that currently has up a snow fence that he's waiting for this
Okay, all right.
To be finished, so he can get his fence put up. So yes, it does, that's why it actually made this agenda, instead of normally, the first reading is on the second reading of the month, but we were able to squeeze it in.
Thank you.
Other questions? This is a public hearing on ZA-1314. Any comments? This is a public hearing. Last call for public hearing?
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on ZA-1314. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Move approval of ZA-1314.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ZA-1314. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, again, unanimous, thank you. There are no quasi-judicial public hearings, but we do have several ordinances, and we will have citizens' comments first on those ordinances. One regards parking specifications, parking and loading areas. Second deals with the sign standards and permitted signs and window signs. Are there any citizen comments on those two ordinances? These are both second readings. Okay, hearing none?
The next ordinance is ZA-1014, which is the second reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. Ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26, Punta Gorda Code, known as the Land Development Regulations, amending Article 10, Parking and Loading Areas, Section 10.3, Parking Specifications, amending subsection I, Clarifying Requirements for Alternative Materials, amending Article 19, Definitions, Section 19.3, Prens 181, Paved, Removing Reference to Crushed Compacted Gravel, and amending Section 19.3, Prens 182, Pavement, Removing References to Grass Parking, and Updating Definition, Providing for Conflict and Severability, and Providing an Effective Date.
Okay, this is a second reading, and there's no public hearing necessary. Any comments or questions?
Move approval of ZA-1014?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ZA-1014. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. ZA-1114 also.
Yes, and this also is the second reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 26, Punta Gorda Code, known as the Land Development Regulations, amending Article 11, Sign Standards, Section 11.3, Permitted Signs, Subsection P, Window Signs, amending method of measurement, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
Again, questions, comments?
Move approval, ZA-1114?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ZA-1114. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously again. We will now move to the consent agenda. Are there any items anyone wishes to pull? I would like to pull B1 regarding our dates. Is there anything else? We have citizen comments on the consent agenda items, except for B1, which are the changing the dates of council meetings. No citizens' comments, so.
Move approval of the consent agenda, except for?
Okay, it's been moved to approve the consent agenda, except for B1. All in favor?
Aye.
Did we get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Aye, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
One of the things that I wanted to suggest is that we could move Uh, one of the things that I wanted to, um, suggest is that we could move the dates even further back to the last two weeks of August, which, again, gives us...
That's what we did last year, yeah.
That's what we had done last year, and that gives us more like a five-week break. Is there...
I believe the difference is that, um, I considered that when I did the resolution, but you'll have three back-to-back meetings if you do that? If, I don't know if you want to do that. Three weeks in a row, that's, but that's up to you. Just believe that was the case last year.
But, okay, how would that work, though? Because we would meet on the nineteenth, the twenty-sixth. Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. And then September second, we would have three in a row.
That doesn't bother me.
Doesn't bother me either.
Doesn't bother me.
Probably bothers staff more.
Does it bother you?
Bang, 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 bang.
It would just be, I think, an extension of, uh, of time.
What do you think, Howard?
It's okay with us, I mean, we're...
Here anyway.
Yeah. We're gonna do the work.
It's okay with me.
It's fine with me.
I don't know if I can stand being away that long, but I guess it's okay.
We might have withdrawal, council, council meeting withdrawal? All right, then, I think we, if you don't mind, do we need a motion on that? Okay, we need a motion then to approve August 19 and 26.
Karen, how would that conflict, if any, with the code enforcement board, which is usually the, towards the end of the month there?
Check the calendar real quick.
I could wear a suit three weeks in a row, but not four.
Oh, come on.
Sorry, I'm not able to bring up my, um, my chamber calendar for some reason. Let me just check with, uh...
On the city calendar, it says it's on the 23rd.
Twenty-third?
Okay, thank you. Mary was ready. Yes, August 26th is a conflict.
Oh, okay.
With code enforcement.
Code enfor, code enforcement meets on the 26th?
Oh, yes. Sorry, I was looking at September.
They meet the fourth, Fourth Wednesday?
Well, our dates then would be...
To 12 and 19, but, but that brings, that reduces the break.
You know, the, um, there, there's plenty of time for the code enforcement board to change the date to either Tuesday or Thursday, so that wouldn't be a problem. I just wanted to make sure that it was recognized.
Okay, why don't we do that then?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Is it gonna, would it disrupt any other board mechanics? As far as like, you know, how some things have to go back and then...
No, there's plenty of time to address any concern that...
Okay.
...raise for scheduling.
So we do need a motion then to approve the amended, um...
I make a motion to approve the amended dates.
Second.
It's been moved and approved to, been moved and seconded to approve the amended dates, all in favor?
Aye.
And none opposed, thank you. Okay, we now move into our regular agenda items and citizen comments on any of the items that we have on our regular agenda only. Uh, we have unfinished business to consider the schedule of the Harbor Walk West. We have new business with Cooper Street Park operating hours, and also discussion regarding boat cradle structure in rear yards within the special residential overlay district only. Any citizens' comments on any of those areas? Okay, moving on then. We have our Harbor Walk West, construction schedule.
Good morning, for the record, Joan LeBeau, Urban Design. And for you today, we have the Harbor Walk West. This is a approved project that is scheduled in our capital improvements budget for 2015 through 2019. Staff is proposing the following construction timeline, um, in an effort to avoid any impacts, adverse impacts to the community. With the area being so large, if we do it in phases, we can possibly keep some of the areas open and not have to close the park for an extended period of time. And then the second reason we'd like to do it in phases is to make sure that the city avoids any conflict with the construction area that is being federally funded by FDOT and the LAP program. So if we look at the project in whole, it runs from the Punta Gorda Hotel side, uh, clear to westward to the Linear Park area, uh, near Fisherman's Village. Looking at the project, the phasing... Looking at the phasing that we have now. We will start with, um, the recent, the project that has been completed, the Gilcrest Landing that was completed. Our first phase that we'd like to do is the seawall and the fishing pier. The next phase that we can do simultaneously with that is the Area 3 section. And the Area 3 section, um, runs from Gilcrest Landing to, again, the start of the Linear Park project. Looking at Area 1, which is the federally funded portion of the park, uh, project, it runs from Harvey Street to the Ponte Statue. The funds will account for the seawall in that area. The next section will be Area 2, that'll be the last section that we propose to do. And then that will run from, um, the Ponte Statue to the Gilcrest Landing site. And Kittyland will be involved in that portion of it. It can be done separately after Area 2 is done. Staff recommends beginning with the fish, the ADA requirements at the fishing pier, and then the seawall from, the replacement of the seawall from Ponte, uh, Ponte Statue there, westward to the Gilcrest Landing site. Looking at Area 3, um, that will run from Berry Street, um, down to the Linear Park section. Two of the things that will be mandated in, that we will require in this portion of the project is the Harbor Walk walkway, as well as the stormwater in this section. There is an option to provide additional parking and street improvements that would include the cul-de-sac expansion and the parking for the impact building, which will be considered at a late, during the funding phase.
Rachel?
Do we have any plan, any plans for any of that? Or would that, that all still needs to be designed and everything?
We have some plans that will show you...
The stormwater?
Um, for Area 3?
Yes.
Uh, tho, those plans are being developed now, right, Mike?
We have completed in the past...
Your name, please?
I'm sorry, Mike Chardolo for the record, uh, with Wyler Engineering. We have completed in the past some design plans for this area. However, they don't include the off-street parking. So if you do the off-street parking, unfortunately, the Harbor Walk that we designed that had a curvilinear design has to now be flat in order to bring all those people in from the cars. It doesn't include the cul-de-sac, so there, depending on which option you go, we would have to go back and redesign that area.
And the options will be, um, discussed a little bit later in the presentation. So, the staff, um, is proposing the engineering services for this begin in 2015, and we would hope to begin construction by this summer. Um, the construction will take approximately 12 to 14 months to complete.
Excuse me, Tom?
Joan, would you explain to, uh, everyone the reason that we are rebuilding the seawall?
Yes. With the Area 1 funding...